Welcome to the Village of Canaan February 7, 2023 Board Meeting. In case of emergency, please do not use the elevator. Use the door to my left, your right for the fire escape. Or there is a stairwell behind the elevator. So please remember that in case of emergency, please do not use our elevator. I would like to ask, we're going to do the pledge of allegiance next, and I'd like to have Chief Andy Roush lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States or into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, with God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda was approval of the minutes for November 22, 2022 workshop meeting. Any questions, comments, corrections? Okay, okay, on a motion to approve, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to the December 6, 2022. Anything with those minutes? Okay, on a motion to approve the December 6 meeting minutes, second, all in favor?
Aye.
And moving on to December 2022 workshop meeting. Do we have anything for there?
Nope.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion, so can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Comments from the floor? You'll wait to the end for the comments, right? Okay. Okay, so under new business, we have swearing in of fire chiefs, but first, I would like to ask Chief Andy Roush to come to the podium.
Yeah, start, 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 start. The type is.
Yeah. Yeah, see? That's good, thank you. Good thing Anthony was there, I would have took the thing with me. Oh boy, can't take me anywhere. Andy? I'd like to thank you for your service to the Village of Canaan. I have here, whoops, I did, the stats that we had from last year, January 1st to December 31st of 2022. It is there, sorry. The firehouse. We'll get category. I'm gonna get myself together, yeah. And I take long lines, I'm gonna get myself together. So, Canaan Engine Company has answered a total of 169 alarms for assistance from our residents and neighbors. Below is a breakdown of alarms from January 1st to December 31st of 2022. EMS assist 76, structured fire related 5, other emergency 46, and neutral aid 42. So Andy, you were the chief during that time, I just want to say thank you for everything that you did and all the hard work, I know it was a busy year. And I, yeah, it's always good the events. And I have a certificate of appreciation for you. Presented to Andrew Roush in grateful recognition of services rendered to the Village of Canaan, Southern New York. The village would like to thank you for your service as Canaan Engine Number One Fire Chief. But thank you so much.
Thank you.
That's our new. Thank you.
Great job.
Okay, Tom, the next. Okay, the following members were elected in the 2023 chief selection. Chief Robert Outhouse, you could come up. First is Assistant Chief Albert Roush, the third. Second Assistant Chief, Darren Outhouse. And then I just want the board of trustees, the Canaan Engine Company, Robert Wheeler as chairman, Jack Delaney, Angela Outhouse, Rocco Pachiano, and Brian Talks. So, since our photographer's over there. Come over this way. Right? You're gonna raise your right hand, please. I state your name. I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge your duties.
And I'll faithfully discharge my duties.
Of the position of.
Fire Chief.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
All right, thank you, congratulations. Chief, would you like to say if you worked? Peter, did you get a picture?
Yeah.
For them.
Mayor, on behalf of Canaan Engine Company. I'd like to thank the village board for cooperation over the years. For the people in the room this evening and the people that are watching. We made history here this evening by having a public swearing in by the village officials. Their three-year history of the department, that has never happened, so it is a proud moment. As we move forward with Canaan Engine Company and the village of Canaan. And if the public realizes that we are a volunteer fire company. And we need members. Every day. We need more members. We'll continue to look for more members. As the days go on, but we continue to give great service. So I'm looking forward to, and I know my assistant chiefs, we have a great deal of knowledge at the chief ranks. And I'm looking forward to working with all the department heads and the committees, planning and zoning, and village administrator, and of course the village attorney, of course, the village board. So again, thank you very much for this opportunity this evening, and I look forward to working with everybody.
Okay, the next is. I'm going to open the public hearing to amend the code of the Village of Canaan, modifying the accessory apartments. So I'd like to make a motion to open for the public hearing, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. This is something that has been worked on. There was a joint board meeting that had a really good discussion about the accessory dwelling unit. But I really feel, under the circumstances, and you know, I'm sure the board understands also, what's going on with the governor's proposal of 800,000 new board units in the state. It's kind of really not appropriate for us to go forward with this at this time because of what's on the table with the governor's budget, the assessment dwelling unit, or as she calls it, the New York housing compact. Um. Fortunately, for us, there is something called a safe harbor municipalities. So I'll just quickly read it, this, this is very involved. There's a lot of work going on with it. I will be on a call on Friday with the Assembly delegation discussing this. Westchester Municipal Officials Association has been having conversations about this. The governor just came out with this on February 1st. So there's a lot of talk, a lot of discussion. As everyone knows, we have some development coming into the village. Behind the hardware store and also across St. Christopher's. So fortunately, this is going to help us if this all gets passed. So safe harbor local governments are those that during the applicable period, which starts January 1st of 2024 to December 31st, 2026, have met or exceeded its residential dwelling unit growth target during the applicable three-year time period. We are in, considered down county. We're considered downstate. Anything along the Long Island Railroad or MTA is considered downstate. So we would have had to increase by 3%. With the projects that are happening, we're going to have approximately 200 more residential units. So that puts us into a safe harbor situation, which is good for us. Um. Otherwise, there's different things that the governor has proposed that could happen if the community doesn't comply. Um. So fortunately, that will, it will be okay, but there's all kinds of, there's all kinds of things that are in here, I'm sure some of it will be changed. Let's see, hold on, I just want to point out a few things. So the secret process, which has always been a big thing for the state, is, is not, it doesn't apply anymore, it doesn't matter, because the governor is pushing for 800,000 new housing, so whatever it takes. Um. So the municipality would have to amend its regulations to allow ABUs as, as of right in all, all areas that allow single-family and multifamily uses. Lots lists, the municipality would have to amend its regulation to allow for lots to be split as of right, subject to very limited restrictions imposed by the local government, so basically remove exclusionary measures. The municipality, they have to amend its regulations to remove any exclusion, exclusionary land use regulations. So municipality could not impose lot coverage restrictions or impose parking minimum exceeding one space per dwelling unit. So basically our zoning, our zoning, they're trying to take away the local, and I'm sure Dave knows only this verse, home rule, which is something New York State has. I can tell you that Nassau County, Long Island is fighting a tooth and nail. Smart growth rezonings, adaptive reuse zonings, fast track use approvals for non-safe harbor communities. Um, it really is one crazy law, and then when we get into the transit oriented district development, which is good, we are, we are outside of that. Um. If you're a tier one, which we're not going to be, that would be stations located, so this is transit oriented district, so this is along the railroad lines. If you're located no more than 15 miles from New York City, municipalities in such zones would be required to allow for development of a minimum average density of at least 50 residential units per acre. I believe we'd fit into a tier three. So that would be stations located more than 30 miles, but not, no more than 50 miles from New York City. And that would be, what is it, 20 residential dwelling units per acre. So the local laws implementing that would exempt from the sequel review, like I mentioned. So this is, this is a very challenging legislation, but I don't know where we're going to end up with that, so as we're talking about the AGU, you know, this, it might be a moot issue. Also, the next one, we are going to talk about lot coverage, but that also might be a moot issue, because if the state comes through and makes decisions, then that might, then it might not matter, lot coverage anymore. People could actually split their properties and put another parcel on it or add on to their property, so this is really radical, but we'll see, we'll see, you know, how it works out, we'll work through it. Um, so we opened the public hearing, I just wanted to explain a little bit about what's going on at the AGU. So I think what's appropriate at this point with this accessory apartment is to table this. Close it, close it, just close it right now, okay. I, oh, we have to take a vote first. Oh, that's true, I heard the public hearing on, would anybody like to comment on the AGU? It's quite, quite interesting legislation, but not a positive for the, for suburbia, basically. No?
Nope, no.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
All right, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So do we still, we don't have to vote on it? Yes, we have to vote, yes, okay, so. Um, I'd like to make a motion. Um. All in favor, who are in favor of amending the code of the Village of Canaan, modifying the criteria for accessory apartments?
We don't have a resolution, right?
No, I'm just, I'm, we're going to say no, and then, yeah. And so I, I, like I said, I don't think it's appropriate at this time that we move forward with this, so all in favor?
Other question?
Sure, absolutely.
A year or so ago, when I had requested legislation to modify the accessory apartment law, I wanted to make the law easier to follow. We have been chasing this issue for 20 years within the village. I always felt that laws that are easy to follow will be followed. I think they're difficult to follow and arduous, it's ripe with violations. As I had stated last month or the month before, when I wanted to abandon this law, was because I believe the regulations that were put in place as a great committee that were put together without culling any of those requests made it even worse to follow. There was language in there about following the local waterfront revitalization program that is not even in place, there was things that were much more arduous and much more over for interpretation, so this law is written right now that we were going to try to pass. I would not be in favor for it, of it in its current form, and I would recommend keeping the old one, but removing, we can still remove the income legislation request in that. So we can, I don't know how we can do it, but because we don't even have a resolution, but we could just leave it, we can leave it alone, you know, that one thing is, has not been really explored because there is really no income legislation numbers that have been adjusted for inflation over the past 20, 30 years. So I would definitely be in favor of abandoning this resolution.
And I also did agree with you on the, the income, the financial end of that, that, you know, I would have liked to have seen that taken out, but under the circumstances, I, I think the rest of it was not totally. I, I think it was not a bad ABU legislation, but since the, the state might be coming out with something different, there's no sense in moving forward with this.
Absolutely.
So, um. Okay, so you're on a question?
That's.
Okay. Um, so I asked for a vote, so who is in favor of modifying the criteria for the accessory apartments that we worked on? I would say I'm a nay on that.
Still need a second to be able to vote on this.
I thought he did the second, that's why I asked, okay, sorry.
I didn't think we were going to get a second, so I thought it'd be a good time to come.
Okay, oh. Okay, so we're going to vote on this, and can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
So.
Against the rest of the.
Against.
Against.
So is that unanimous that is against the resolution? I know, that was a little tricky, I know, I know. The state threw us a curve ball there, so. All right, the next, I'd like to make motion, open the public hearing, amending the code of the Village of Canaan, modifying lot coverage requirements, can I have a second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, Dave, you did a great job with that. Would you like to make a comment about?
Lots of background.
Yes, you have lots of background, and lots of, lots of experience, so, thank you.
The revenue is. Uh, so the, just by way of background, the public, the village, I think considering comments on lot coverage. And essentially that means, under the village code, specifically reference the proportion of all ground floor areas and structures of our lot, of the total area of the lot expressed as a percentage. Ground floor areas shall be measured by taking the outside dimensions of the ground level of all accessory and principal facilities, including porches, carports, garages and sheds. Structures for the purposes of lot coverage shall include swimming pools, pay dairy, walk, walkways, and whether constructed or curvied materials or not, patios, decks, and driveways and parking lanes. So that's the definition of a lot of it currently in the code. And the issue is that, had properties that develop over time, the previous surface areas, they generate storm water, and that's one of the, the zoning criteria that the building department needs to, and a planning board, you know, to accommodate as part of the developments in the family lots and other commercial properties. So, uh, I was tasked with first reaching out to the building department, the village attorney, and the zoning board chair to find out if there were a significant trend in requests for zoning variances related to lot coverage. And if there were, there were some requests over the years. And particularly, I think one of the, the comments that I got from the zoning board chairman, Mr. Bell, was that the, the regulations probably could be expanded to allow for additional lot coverage over what's currently divided. And typically, I'll just go through the literature quick. For our R40 district, you have currently 25% maximum lot cover. And then for your other residential districts, you are 20, you are 15, you are 10, 7.25, you have a 30% block cover. And commercial districts right now, C1, C2 has 50%. So the, the, the comment that Mr. Bell made was that perhaps 40% is a reasonable number to consider as part of that, so that's by way of background. Asking village staff who deals with this on a more daily basis, what are then the trends? The other part of the, the exercise that I was requested was to do a desktop survey of other communities within Westchester County, and we looked at 11 different communities, most of which are in and around the Village of Canaan. And the numbers, and these are all contained in a memo that's stated with 11.49, that's just. In the surveys, some communities had greater lot coverage, others had, had less, and so I think the the issue that we discussed at the meeting was that perhaps the 40% figure is probably a right sized figure for the Village of Canaan. So with that, the third part of the, the exercise of the past was to prepare red line revisions to your ballpark regulations. And this was done, so we bumped up the maximum lot coverage, for instance, in the R40 from 25 to 35%. And then in the other residential districts, they went from 30%, 40%. And the commercial districts, C1, C2 went from 50 to 75, recognizing that those commercial districts simply have more intensive parking regulations that can be accommodated as part of, as part of zoning. And in my discussions with the building department, Mr. Cook, we added a note on the fault table, which I think is important, because one of the impacts of additional impervious surface is storm water management, and new development needs to be accommodated at the 100%, the 100-year storm event. And so the, the issue was, all right, so you have existing properties which may not have accommodated stormwater management before, now they're coming in for a pool or patio or something along those lines. So that additional impervious surface as part of this regulation would now need to be accommodated at the 100%, the 100-year storm threat. And in addition, because you got existing, pre-existing impervious surface, that 10% of that pre-existing would be accommodated as part of that overall design. So in essence, you're not, there have been instances and, and examples where communities have required, you're in that situation, that you have to do 100%. So that may be much too onerous for a property. And the thought was that we can capture 10% of what's existing, which hasn't been accommodated at all, plus anything that's new and impervious. That's a reasonable approach to allowing for improvements in property and accommodating stormwater management. Part of this, because that's principally one of the, the biggest things that we have to, is kind of the same. So, Madam Mayor, that is a summary of the process we did. I did appear before, worked with the planning board, we appeared at their last meeting in January, and we discussed this, there is a requirement to the village code, there goes the planning board, the review and recognition. And I believe that the recommendation, I don't know if this, I think the members, yes, I mean, yeah, that they thought that the proposed amendments were reasonable, and that it was something that could be accommodated as part of amendment.
So did the zoning board, you might put down a record too. We had to, the zoning board, they have any objections, Peter?
Yeah, we, we provided all this information to the zoning board as well. So I was, you know, they don't have any objections to it. So, Madam Mayor, members of the board, that's a summary of the proposed local law, remains the zoning code in part of the public hearing, happy to answer your questions.
Did we receive any written correspondence to, from the planning board, or do we have a request?
No, they had a meeting, at the last meeting, they said they had no objections.
Is that recorded in their minutes?
Uh. Yeah.
There is, okay, as long as we have a record.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's not just anecdotal.
Don't, don't even get it by email, though, we have a meeting tomorrow with the zoning board, but the zoning board responded by email. So we can put it in their record as well, that had.
As long as they have a record that they approved, it'll happen, it's for somebody to challenge.
Absolutely.
Especially in 10 years.
Absolutely. Mayor, just to let you know, George Palmer's on, on, online, in case anybody has a question regarding the engineering of any of those questions as well, just to let everybody know, he's on, he's on Zoom as well.
Oh, thank you, George, for joining.
You're welcome.
Um, okay, anyone, anyone in the audience? I've got no comments. I'm sorry.
I have a question.
Oh, sure, I'm sorry.
Dave, so on, on the pre-existing impervious, you're adding, so any new construction? You're going to add 10% of pre-existing to a new, a new permit?
Yes, so if you had an existing lot, and it was already built out before any of these, the, the coverage requirements were in place, or you got an approval and it, and requirements weren't there, and you want to add, let's say, a patio, a, and by calling patio, so you have to pick up all of the the stormwater runoff that will be generated by having that area covered. And then whatever the balance of your property is, let's say you have 2,000 square feet of coverage with, that includes a driveway, it's a house, maybe, whatever. So you have to pick up 10% of that, along with the new impervious areas.
I think we'd benefit from that.
Yeah, it's, it's a way, it was a very good suggestion. Trying to recognize that the, the big issue is stormwater management, and also to recognize, you don't want to be over onerous to a property owner, you want to try and recognize that you got a situation, you can make it a little bit better, but not overly, overly penalized for, for what's there existing.
That was your idea, Peter?
Yes, 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 that was his idea.
Yeah, that was a good suggestion.
Thank you, Peter.
Okay, so now Lehman's turn.
Oh, that was Lehman's.
It was a word, word problem style.
No, that's all right.
What I really want you to do is, I want you to explain to the public, not including me, now, the planning board member. Um, what is onerous about this? To the, to the applicant who would like to do something, maybe has something that already done, and what they're going, who they're going to have to hire, and, you know, what's the cost to the homeowner? It's great to say 40%. You know, 75, I don't know, it doesn't matter to me, yeah, but, you know, the leakage. But the problem is that somebody with a smaller lot, or even somebody in Valerie or in Donahue, who has bigger property, how is that going to impact them? In regards to the stormwater, and I know that this just came up, but you've got people who have pools now. Um, and, you know, I'm thinking, if the pool breaks, I have one in front of me, and then there's somebody else over in Valerie that has an above-ground pool. If that breaks, the lot parties are going, are sloping down. So where does that water go to, and how is that remedied? But first, how do you, how do you justify how much is going to cost the entity to do the stormwater watch?
Well, in order to get a building permit, you're going to have to file with the building department.
Right.
You're going to have to indicate what you're proposing, and the stormwater management is required, so.
I got that.
That, that's required.
But I think people have to understand what that's going to, how that's going to increase and de-increase their expenses, but decrease their lot coverage. From what I'm getting.
See, there's any correlation between increasing any expenses, simply increasing allowable lot coverage.
They're going to have to, there are expenses with engineering, right? And they're going to have to install a system to handle the water, a collection system. And they're gonna have to install a, a system to handle the water, a collection system, whether it be a Coltech or something like that. And that'll all be done with, by engineering. And when they. Apply for the permit, they're gonna have to also submit an engineer's report on what he recommends to collect the water.
Okay, so.
And all that is required, it's required now.
Yes, right.
I'm not getting much mandated or required. Are you going to be, um, forthcoming with the applicant that this is what they will need if they come to you?
Yes.
Okay, I mean, is this going to be, will this be written down or?
Yes, it will be part of our bulk table.
It's, it's written in our table of bulk regulations.
Yes.
Okay.
This already is a law in effect, this is what they would have to do, this is only changing the limit, that's, that's all, so it's not changing anything procedure.
Yeah, you still have to.
Stormwater, and I mean, I'm thinking of the guy that was up on sewage to the pool and. And, um, there was a, a concern because the house next to him was in the lower grade. And he had to have stormwater drainage, um, and that did pose a problem. Um, it, it just brought the project out a little bit longer. But I just want to make sure that residents know that this is upfront and not personal. But something that they have to, uh, be aware of and that it will, um, impact them as to what they want to put on their property.
Well, when we talk about enlarging a lock coverage, didn't we say anything above what we currently had? Would be subject to the stormwater management? And what we had previously, it wouldn't be. But there's no verbiage in here that says that. So we shouldn't. Our code doesn't require things, uh, the stormwater management up to the current lock.
Well, if that's thirty percent, you have to, before you go.
Yeah, no, sorry.
Thirty percent.
Or each one is a little bit different, yeah. Yes, but I, I think that's where we came in with the stormwater management, so are we saying anybody? Who does any improvement? Has the, the stormwater management?
No, for, uh, want to increase a lock coverage.
If we increase the lock, currently, you don't need the stormwater management up to these. Up to these limits.
That's correct.
You know, pre-existing condition.
Right.
Pre-existing.
Well, I believe if you were to install a swimming pool or something right now, if it's impervious, you, you still, you, it's a law, you have to put it in.
Correct. So even up to thirty percent, we'd have to, or up to forty percent?
If you had.
You have to manage your own.
Twenty-five percent lock coverage. And you're allowed thirty percent and you put a pool in. Not pools within that five percent, you need to. Manage that additional five percent.
Up to a hundred percent?
For the hundred percent storm, the hundred year storm.
Well, a hundred percent of the hundred years storm.
Correct.
Is that currently what we, everybody has to do now for any improvement, any increased cut in pervious surface?
Yes.
That's throughout the county, Peter?
But if we already, yes, yes, but if we already have to do it, why, why are we adding it? To the table of bulk regulation, if it, if it wasn't there before.
The, the issue is that, uh, you have a pre-existing condition that isn't accommodated as part of stormwater management. And so when I, an applicant, a resident comes in and they ask for, uh, the additional lock coverage. That they have to apply that one hundred percent of the one hundred year storm event, the additional lock coverage, and then pick up. Ten percent of the, the pre-existing.
I, I understand, I understand what we're trying to do.
So that's, that's what we have right now.
Do we have that right now?
Yes.
Then why are we adding it?
There should already be embedded someplace in our code. What's, what is being added is the issue of giving up.
Well, yeah, ten percent.
Oh, sorry, a hundred percent is already in the code, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I think that was a way.
Okay. So it's already there?
Yes.
All right.
And, and I think that's fair for other residents, so if you have somebody that's developing their property. You don't want to get the runoff.
That's right.
Be fair, it happened to me many years ago. Um, so you, you don't want that to happen, you know, you don't want to suddenly have a dry piece of property and then all of a sudden. You have runoff from a project, so.
Okay, so what happens with the pools? That were pre-existing or that aren't pre-existing? That could potentially break and come on to.
Be, 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 hey, George, you're, you're out there, you want to address that a little bit, and then brought, and then Peter can address it as well?
This, this has nothing, it really has nothing to do with it.
No, no.
Excellent.
That, these pre-existing, uh, um, pools, pools or anything else that might. In here and capture property. Are they just kind of like run by the lake side? Within this.
Unless somebody could be working. And wants additional, and they'll pick up ten percent.
She's talking about the pool fails.
No, it's, it's normal. Somebody comes in.
If the pool fails, it's different than the stormwater.
Right.
It's sort of clear, if somebody has an above ground pool. It creates. How that runoff is accommodated is a different issue that.
Well, guess what, it accommodates into my yard, which goes into a brook, that goes into the lake, that goes into the river.
I understand that.
But that, I don't know what works to that, but. Um, and that's for an ancient water. I'm just saying, and there's, and there's other places too, that do have an above ground pool. That have low lying properties next to it, that have a creek bed or have some other kind of string. That goes into the woods and, you know, I'm just curious.
That's right.
It's, but it's not related to stormwater.
Okay.
And so, anyone else?
Hi, Armin Barker from, uh, about four hundred window.
Yeah.
The one thing we keep saying is impervious, impervious, can we just make sure, if we be clear, that I guess in a hundred years, well, that. Because our code right now says. For. Patios, decks, driveways and parking areas, pervious and impervious. So when we do a hundred year storm count, does pervious count towards that as well? Or, or, what's that?
Doesn't matter. Yeah.
But I'm saying, you, I think Mr. Smith kept saying. The hundred year floodstorm, maybe I'm misinterpreting words, impervious material and pervious material. But is it pervious and impervious?
It would have to be.
So like if somebody adds a, a. Stone patio.
Mm-hmm.
Pervious, pervious, so like if.
What we're saying is you put in a gravel driveway. Like gravel is pervious, so that shouldn't cover door, that it's still.
It's still lock covered.
It's still not, but it's still lock covered.
But it can be covered under a hundred year.
But is it still?
So what are you asking, is it lock coverage or is it covered under the storm? What, what, what is the question?
The hundred year storm.
Okay, yeah, well, that, I, I mean, it's still lock coverage.
It's still lock coverage, I get it.
Uh, George.
Different question, I guess, is.
Well, that, that's.
No, I get what you're saying.
George is, George is engineer, George.
Yes.
Even gravel driveways or walkways, I'm interested. Impervious as from his engineering point of view. So George, you want to address that question?
Sure, um. This is common in a lot of codes in, in Westchester, um, in a lot of municipalities. And the reason that is, is that. These gravel driveways, they don't, they don't stay pervious, they tend to become. Um, asphalt or they become clogged or they're not maintained, so. Um, that's why in these codes and, and many other codes in the, in the munis, in, um, municipalities in Westchester. They've just defaulted that if it's either pervious or impervious, counted as pervious. And do a, do a calculation. And, um, manage, manage the water that comes off of there.
So, again, so it's the same rock that I made the driveway with, if I use the same rock in my landscaping, that wouldn't count?
Does landscaping count for lock coverage also?
No, it's not a driveway and it's not a patio.
No, no, the question, the harm is saying the rock, you're saying gravel. If you put a gravel walkway in the backyard.
I want to be clear that someone.
That's not, that's not what I'm trying to say. So you do a gravel in the backyard, is gravel considered impervious or pervious? For the lock coverage calculation, it doesn't matter.
I, if, if it's, if it's, you're making a gravel pathway or gravel driveway, it's counted if you're just putting. Sprinkling rocks in the backyard or, or, or in your garden or whatever, that, that's, that's separate. That, that, that doesn't count.
But landscaping does not count towards lock coverage calculations?
No, uh, I, a patio, a walkway, I think in the definition, it's the patio, the walkways and the driveways.
Sometimes the pervious and pervious gets a little, what about, what about a wall?
Yes, that counts as coverage too. I think that's part of the definition, correct, David?
Well, I don't see a wall.
That doesn't specifically say wall.
So.
But I think, I think, the question, you put, if you put a couple of rocks around for you, for.
If you put decorative landscape stone.
Right.
In your flower beds, it's not compacted, it's, doesn't count as pervious or impervious, it doesn't count as lock coverage.
Mm-hmm.
And so George, you're saying wallstone either?
Wallstone is, 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 is a structure.
Right.
So it definitely.
It sure counts.
Definitely count the lock.
Right.
And then, okay, so I just want to make sure that's clear, so those discussions on pervious and pervious, and then the other question is. Uh. As lots get smaller. I still think it's unfair for the smaller lots to have forty percent coverage, this is my opinion. If we deal with the stormwater aspect of it. Your house may be fifty percent of your lock coverage in some of these, these lots, so that means they can't put a shed. They can't put anything in their backyard. And I just, I don't, you know, for the people with smaller lots, I just. I don't know if there's a sliding scale that could be done or. If that's the way it's gonna be, that anybody who wants to put anything in their backyard with a smaller lot.
Well, being that it's not a, if, if you're putting a shed, it's, it's not a permanent structure, correct? Is that considered still?
Yes. Yep, it's blocking your water.
Well, you're not, you're not actually getting a building permit for a smaller size, less than ten by ten, you don't need a building permit, right?
Yes.
Eight by eight, so. So anything under that?
Yeah, and, yeah, anything under that you could put on there, but it's still gonna be over your lock up, check.
Well, I, I don't know the specs on that.
If you're fifty percent, you can't really go anywhere in your backyard.
David, aren't there several, when you did your, your research, like there are several municipalities within county that have a sliding scale such as that, like. I know down county, it's probably. Scarsdale, Harrison area.
Sliding scale is different than having a lock coverage requirement for, um. A different lot size. In other words, if you're in the, um. You are twenty, it, you know, right now it's proposed at forty percent. And I'm understanding your question, if you're in an R seven point five, it may be greater, it should be greater than forty percent.
Something. Or, or do a calculation where the house is one and then.
Right now, so that's one way by looking at it by zones, there are, Scarsdale has, uh, a sliding scale. Not by zone, but it depends on the size of the lot.
Yeah.
And there's a percentage, a sliding scale percentage based on the size of the lot. So there's, there are, there's, that's one example of a community that has a different approach to.
You're not gonna see many sheds in Scarsdale though.
Most of the building is the building, seventy-five percent of the lock. So that's.
Again, it's just something to consider, uh, because I would hate for homeowners who have put stuff. The. You know, uh, or not be able to do anything in their backyard, just. And new, as new homeowners come in here, they want to be covered with their backyards.
So I believe eight by eight structure without footings, correct, is allowed and it's not considered lock covered though?
Um. We had discussions, George, last year, and we concerned, uh, even the dog houses into the company.
That's, that's, that, I don't agree. I don't agree with that, that's, that, if it's not a permanent structure, and if you requirements are eight by eight, then. Without footings, I can't consider it a lock coverage.
Still stop the water from absorbing into the ground, but that's the problem.
It's elevated though.
Still taking that air in, water being vocal pointed around, like it's not absorbing.
That was kind of my issue.
Sorry. Okay, I'll speak up. Anything that's covering dirt of the property at all, considered, keeps the water from absorbing the soil, if it's vocal pointed around it. That's the whole mitigation point. The watershed is there, the water would absorb into that impervious area. But now you're taking it away, and you're stopping water from absorbing the mat, and it's running off the roof, and then vocal going around it. So if it can't handle it around it, it's gonna want to go elsewhere. So everything that's stopped water from absorbing the property is considered.
And as I understand it, if you put decking down with slits so the water could go through, that still counts?
Yes. I think so, right.
So the pervious, even the pervious, the, the pervious stone that you would put down as a, um. A, a unilock system or something, that would be pervious, because there are a plenty of them, still requires a collection system.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
So.
So anyway. Okay. Thank you.
And I guess the benefit of this legislation is for those people who have done things and not in compliance with our code, uh, will now be legalized. Is there anyone else that would like? With this one? So I'd like to make the motion to close the public hearing on this.
I vote to close the public hearing.
One second.
Second.
Um, further.
All right.
So now I'm going to read the resolution to adopt local law number two. Amending chapter two eleven entitled zoning to the Village Buchanan, whereas a resolution was duly adopted by the Board of Trustees, the Village. Uh, Buchanan for public hearing to be held by said village board at municipal building two thirty-six Tate Avenue Buchanan. To your all interested parties on a proposed local law to amend chapter two eleven entitled zoning to the code of Village Buchanan. And whereas notice, notice of said public hearing was duly advertised in the official local newspaper. And where I said public hearing was duly held at a regularly scheduled meeting of the village board on February seventh, twenty twenty-three at seven thirty. At the municipal building two thirty-six Tate Avenue Buchanan, New York. And all parties in attendance represented an opportunity to sit on behalf of or in opposition to said proposed local law or any part thereof. And where is the Board of Trustees, Village Buchanan, after due deliberation, finds it in the best interest of the Village Buchanan to adopt said local law. Now be therefore resolved that the Board of Trustees, the Village Buchanan hereby adopt said local law number two, twenty twenty-three. Amending chapter two eleven entitled zoning to the code of Village Buchanan. Be it further resolved that the village court be and hereby directed to enter said local law in the minutes of this meeting. And a local law of the Village Buchanan to give you notice of the adoption of said local law to the special territory of state of New York.
Yes.
And I have a motion to approve this.
He does.
I make a motion.
Thank you. Okay, can I have a second please?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
That's. So election time in the Village of Buchanan, it's here once again, March twenty-first, uh, will be election day. So we, this is something we do every year, um, we appoint the local inspection, election inspectors, so I'd like to make a motion to appoint election inspectors for the March twenty-first, twenty twenty-three general village election. The pay schedule is chairman, a hundred and ninety-five dollars a day, inspector, a hundred and eighty dollars a day, and alternate inspector, ninety dollars a day. Can I have, um, I'm, I'll make the motion, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Thank you. Uh, this is something else we do, uh, I'd like to mo, make a motion to enter into agreement with Westchester County for the use of voting machines for March twenty-first, twenty twenty-three general village election. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
All right.
Okay, um, I think our recreation supervisor is here. Nancy, could you please come up to the podium? In case anyone has any, um, if you could go over once again, the increase in the summer tenant fees that you feel are appropriate to ask for. Well, I have copies of the, I want you. All right, thank you.
Send about an email for this. I already wrote them down. Thanks.
Thank you, Nancy.
I'd love to have one answer. I'm here reading my phone after Tom anyway.
Got a couple, I'm trying to. All right, and this is up to you guys. Which is the twenty twenty-two crisis that we have, we have a total of two hundred and twenty-one registered. Um, three weeks for a resident, we charge three hundred, six weeks we charge five fifty. Out of the sixty-nine Buchanan residents. Eleven came for first session, first three weeks. Nine came for the second three weeks. And forty-nine attended them. Non-residents for four, for three weeks for four hundred and sixty, six weeks behind seventy. Breakdown is there as well. For the first session, first three weeks, thirty-eight of them attended. Second three weeks, twenty-seven attended and eighty-seven non-residents attended for both sessions. Twenty twenty-three, five percent increase for both village resident. And non-resident, village residents would go from three hundred to three fifteen. Or five fifty to five seventy, that's three weeks versus six weeks. Non-resident would go from four hundred and sixty for three weeks. Non-resident would go from four hundred and sixty for three weeks to four hundred and eighty-three. And a six-week program will go from eight hundred and seventy to nine hundred and fourteen. Under that, it does show the estimated increase of revenue. By increasing the village and the non-resident rates. Then I did an eight percent strictly for non-residents. If you didn't wanna go higher on the residents. But keep in mind that the resident rate is still extremely low in comparison to anyone else around, which you should all have as well. So I just need your thoughts on that. So that I can get my cap set out. And I know you had, uh, come before the board, before at the workshop and that, you know, with your request explaining. That we are lower than other municipalities. A lot, yes.
So I know in the next thing, Nancy, we're gonna vote on pay, the pay scale.
Right.
How does this correspond to the pay scale? Did you figure in all this to, to cover the extra pay scales? How you come up with these numbers with the increase?
Um, I did not come up with the numbers based on that. I came up with the numbers because I felt that was enough to increase it, to be quite honest. But it shows you there that if we did the estimate, the eight percent for non-residents, that's a six week is nine hundred and forty dollars. I believe the ton of Portland is fifty over a thousand, so we're getting very close. And so what would weigh them versus us?
Yeah.
Hopefully, I probably might be, you never know.
Well, I did, I saw on Facebook, like, you know, we're praising the Buchanan, they can't.
Oh, yeah. And I'm hoping, I'm hoping, you know, and every year is very different, you know, some years I get a lot of hits and some years I don't. So it's really just a estimate. Because it's not a guarantee for anything as we are.
Well, in the, in the paperwork that you sent out, the increased fees will help cover the budget request as well as.
Right, we find out here as well.
Yeah, so I think it, it's a whole package.
Yeah, it is.
You have a request for increased budget for some things that have gone up in price. As well as the increased sum of the pay because we're lagging behind with other communities and it's making it difficult for us to, to keep our employees. I believe the, uh, increased fees paid for approximately seventy-five to eighty percent of the budget request. So it.
That's what I was trying to get.
It's not a hundred percent, we're not gonna make more money, but it's gonna compensate us, uh, greatly, and it'll probably help, uh, increase some of the, the campus. As you know, we're getting an economy at scale and be able to bring some more people in. So the overall picture that she gave us, I think is pretty good and I think it's pretty reasonable, especially since, uh, we have a lot of problems keeping people and hiring people.
Do try to keep the numbers, the budget, you know, try to spend less than what you guys allow, doesn't always work, but I do try.
And actually, we're only talking about a couple of thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Any other questions from Nancy? And yes, I, I don't want you to go anywhere, or, or I'll ask you now so we can just move on to the increase in camp counselor hourly rate. That is just the senior, just the senior rate. Okay, newbies will start at, you know, a junior council will start at the twelve, if they've been here with me for a year, they get that little extra increase, you know, I think it's about fifty cents, whatever it is. But it's not much, but yeah. So the hourly rate for the senior is going to be fifteens, okay? All right. All right, so I'd like to make a motion to increase the summer camp fees. For twenty twenty-three for resident, a five percent increase. Okay. And for non-resident only, an eight percent increase. Is that what you guys want for the non-resident?
Sure.
Sure. That's your recommendation? Either one, five or eight. Well, eight or non-resident. For non-resident. For non-resident, I know you're talking non-resident, um. Or you wanna do five percent across the board, it was five.
That was the choice you was given.
Yeah.
There's another option that you made.
That was option B. Okay, all right, so the board is, is comfortable with a five percent increase across the board. How's that sound? That sounds great. Okay, you guys are good with that. All right, I'm sorry, so that includes village resident or non-resident, so. Like to make a motion to improve, increase camp fees by five percent for, um, the summer camp for twenty twenty-three. Kansas, uh, are you, is that a question?
No, 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 give me a second. I was gonna say, thank you. Oh, all right.
Okay.
Okay.
Second, all in favor?
All right.
All right, Nick, thank you, Nancy. And then also for the senior camp counselor, um, like to make a motion to, um, increase that to fifteen dollars an hour. Yes.
Second.
Second, on a question? All in favor?
All right.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Nancy, appreciate it.
Do you need a budget approval or you just gotta wait for a budget term?
No, we'll do it, we'll put it.
Do it later, okay. I just wanted her to make her plans based on, you know, affirmative.
Absolutely.
Did she still have to order shirts and bathing?
Yes, yes.
Lots to do.
This will be incorporated, this will be incorporated, yes.
Yeah, and I think Nancy, you wanted to send out the information, so we've had to. Yes, I'll get that out, I'll get that out, no later than next week, so the school will have it and we can start the recording process. Okay, good. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, the next is a motion to through a change order in the amount of six thousand dollars to increase engineers' fee due to revise scope of the boiler work, Marcus, which you like.
Sure, we discussed this at the last meeting, um, a couple of meetings, we received bids for the replacement of the oil burner with a gas boiler. The prices came in a lot, a lot higher than we anticipated. The board, uh, rejected the bids. The engineer went back and trying to create a new scope of work that will cover the product, but four options in regards to give us more flexibility. To go with a conventional boiler versus a high efficiency boiler. Go with two boilers versus one boiler and try to get different prices. To hopefully we can get the price down until we can absorb and actually move forward, so. He will have to do a must, a much bigger scope of work, so he's asking for six thousand dollars to do that work, so that's his proposal. Probably, according to him, will probably stay between eighty to a hundred thousand dollars.
By spending the six thousand?
Correct. Because he talked to the low bidder, and he said he had the other options that he'd be able to be able to, I mean, more flexible with his pricing.
Uh, you know, I.
We don't have the ability to have a contractor come in and.
You have to go out and.
Develop a scope of work and then. Let them all bid, like have them develop their own scope.
Well, then he's gonna create a scope for his, the way he does his work, and he, he, the engineer is making, trying to generic enough to we get multiple bids.
You wanna have a, a criteria that.
No, I get it. Yeah, I mean, th- this is, yeah, I. I mean, he's got you by the neck here, so.
Yeah.
So we're going from high efficiency to a regular boiler.
Convention, yes.
And, but compared to what we have now, um, it's old, it's not energy efficient.
It's gonna be hard to get parts for it.
And it's, well, how old is it now?
Original with the building?
It's original, right?
Yeah.
And did we consider putting in another oil burner? Being that the tank is in good shape?
We could look at that if you wanna do that as an option.
It'll be considerably cheaper.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're, you're, you're eliminating the excavation costs of tank. The plumbing costs of the line coming into the building.
Mm hmm.
I mean, I know you already have it stubbed out, but that stub, it's capped, so it's not gonna be a problem.
Mm hmm.
I mean, just an option.
Yeah.
Just something that, to, to, as an option, because an oil burner, they are much more efficient than the original when that was installed.
Mm hmm, correct, and it is more efficient than what we have right now.
I get it, yeah. And it's pretty much, uh, plug and play situation.
Mm hmm.
You could go out to a contractor, just a regular contractor, just to get like a rough. Approximation.
Well, the problem with the original contractor who gave me the original price, and this is his original price of sixty-eight thousand dollars. And then same contractors came out with, uh, two hundred thousand dollars, same contractor.
Can we continue to research this a little bit?
Whatever you wanna make a decision.
Whatever you want, yeah.
All right, so do you wanna, we'll table this then, this, uh, this evening?
That's fine, whatever.
Getting warm anyway, so we're gonna be good.
Okay.
Springs around the corner.
Yeah, I'm just concerned they, you know, the problem is we are gonna gas, we get the approval, uh, we gotta make the next heating system. The heating spell season is gonna come up, and it, it takes four, 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 five months for contractors to approve everything.
You're gonna have engineering going.
Correct, yeah.
And if the environmental savage wave, you won't have gas or oil.
We'll have either one, correct.
We'll just have a big fire pit in the middle of the building.
Yeah.
How's that sound?
Everything will be electric.
Wow.
Yeah, if anybody had any suggestions, I'm gonna look at something else.
I think, I think, you know, maybe just, I'm, I'm not saying go all back to oil, but it's a consideration because it is considerably cheaper.
Yeah.
Like I said, it is a plug, plug and play system, the system is already designed for it.
Mm hmm.
So, I, I mean, a more efficient oil burner may be the way to go.
Option, okay.
You know, you, that line is cut and capped at the, at the curb line, you always have it for the future.
Absolutely, okay. All right, let me see, uh, take, get some prices on my replacement order, see, I'll come back in the next meeting. Okay, thank you.
Information from officers and departments, uh, justice reports, December twenty twenty-two, um. One report was three hundred and twenty-five dollars, one report was three thousand, seven thousand three hundred and fifty-one. The other was seven thousand four hundred and twenty, so those are received and filed. Police report, December twenty twenty-two, um, total of forty-nine moving summonses, one hundred forty-eight falls, thirty-five parking summon. Speeding twenty-one, disobey traffic control, seven. Um, unspectacular motor vehicle and equipment, other violations, ten, that's received and filed. Highway report, December twenty twenty-two. We, I have seen them even out there in the pole, they've been busy, busy, busy. I saw somebody, um, a couple of guys in a pit. I think, what were they doing across the village hall? They were doing, um.
A, a cat basic, stormwater cat basic, that totally collapsed, so they re-actually rebuilt the entire thing.
Wow, that's right. Um, household garbage, seventy-seven tons, bulk and dumpsters, twelve dun- tons. Uh, bag leaves, one point five nine tons, metal, two point forty-eight tons, e-waste, ten TVs, two monitors. Wow. In the month of December, air conditioners, one point eighteen tons, forty air conditioners. And, uh, leafback, a hundred and sixty million yards. Okay, great. Uh, wastewater, December twenty twenty-two, nine million six hundred nineteen thousand gallons. Sludge removal, a hundred and fifteen thousand gallons. They had a Westchester County Department of Health inspection, no violations reported. Everything looks okay over there. Good, oh. You know what, could we please put this in the next, next newsletter, because this, this seems, this is an ongoing problem, that's saying noticing heavy amount of flushable wipes in stations.
We do it all, do it all the time.
Yeah, please, everyone, you know what?
Yeah.
This is, this is important for our pump stations, this is important for our sewer plants. Even if those wipes say that they're disposable, please, they're not really.
They're flushable for septic tanks.
Oh, that's it.
Designed for sewer.
So, please, please, please do not put that down, the toilet, um, in our wastewater stream because it is not a good thing for us. So I'd like to just ask that again. Building department, December twenty twenty-two. Oh my goodness, uh, lots of building permits issued. Um, inspections, inspections to file for permits. CEOs. What a few of, uh, CEOs were issued, so the building department's been very, very busy. Thank you, Peter. Planning board, minutes for August, oh, August twenty-fifth to twenty twenty-two, received and filed. Um. Buchanan Engine Company for December twenty twenty-two, structure fire zero, EMS assist eight, automatic alarm seven. Mutual aid three, and, and the A, the total of nineteen. Prosecutors report, everyone's received that.
Mayor, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I have a couple notes on the prosecutor's.
Sure, yeah.
That's exactly, so.
Okay, yes, we'll do that, thank you. Okay, attorney's report, Stephanie, what do you have for us?
Only thing I have for public is the license agreement saga continues, they are still looking for insurance. Other than that, we're ready to go. We have, we have the, um, survey, the B, the meets and bounds, the license agreement is, is, is fine. Um, but they're looking for their insurances that I believe our village. Insurance agent, right, suggested.
Providing an option, yeah.
No, suggested.
Suggested.
That's, 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 that's the levels I gave them, that's what they're trying to find, but they haven't come back with any policy above or below. So she contacted me actually today, just to let me know that they're still looking.
Okay, and so everyone is aware, because you know, sometimes we're talking up here and we know we're like involved in it every day, so. This is for a very small piece of village property by the circle.
Behind my report.
Yeah, there's, what's the square footage on it? I mean.
What did she say, sixty-two square feet or something, that's on her, you know, I, you know.
So we have, uh, been working with one of the residents to potentially, um. Have an agreement with them so that they're allowed to park there, but they're looking for insurance now, um, that they, that would be required for the village so that they could park there. Okay, great, anything else, Stefan?
Not for public, no.
Okay, administrators, attorneys, your papers, prosecutors report, what do you have?
Uh, quickly, I met with the city of Peace Skills manager regarding the border little issue that we have with the city of Peacekill. Uh, showing them a couple of maps, uh, showing what, uh, what they were willing to accomplish. Uh, they said they're gonna, he says he's gonna meet with, finally, he'd say he's gonna meet with the, with the mayor and, and the city council and get back to me. Um, look at what, how the process would be. I told him how, how up into that process and get him some information, so we're working on that. Um, some interesting news, um, for yourself is, um. Uh, Sharon and, uh, oh, Sharon and Scott have been working on the street lights from Con Edison. As I don't know if, the way I explained to you, the village pays for every single street light to, to Con Edison. And it's a flat fee that we pay, incandescent or LED, LED is a lot cheaper. Um, so we've never really done the inventory of those lights. So Scott, we actually, Sharon did a lot of work to get the lot, uh, inventory from Con Edison, took some time to get that. We finally got that, gave it to Scott, Scott's just driving around during the entire village, determining where they are. Uh, in fact, we have, have found some location that weren't the lights, there might have been lights twenty years ago, ten years ago, but it's still showing the inventory, but with maybe. A light went down, but never what's reported to Con Edison. So Scott is doing that, gonna report back to Sharon, Sharon's gonna go back into the inventory system and update that information. And make sure everything that we have, everything LED is LED, um, and with all lights are LED right now, and that will hopefully reduce our costs. And there, and you like to have not been operational, we'll take them off the list as well. So Sharon is, I gotta thank Sharon Scott for working on that, and as I guess I said, Scott is driving up and down every single street and marking every single light. That has, I don't think that's ever been done, so we're moving on that as well, so that's for later, no.
And, and so we have taken care of all the decorative. You're talking about the decorative light?
All the lights, all the street, all the, all the, all the lights that we have. Everything's done, but then you have to go into the Con Edison portal and update that information on the portal. I, 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 we've switched everything LEDs, but I don't think everything was reported to Con Edison, so we can get the discounted rate by the D, so we're working on that right now.
But, yes, because I know we, we worked on switching everything over to LED and.
Correct.
But wonderful, thank you, Sharon. What else do you have?
That's it.
That's it? Okay, um, we're gonna do something different today, we're gonna start with Christie, Pat, Patty.
Oh, great.
You're new Maro today.
Um, I don't have much to say, congratulations to Chief House, and thank you, Dandy. Um. Uh, just, just wanted to get an update on the IMA, I did see the email today. I saw that we have some productivity. Uh, hopefully we can follow through with this, um, I believe that it's a great thing for the village, and I hope that we get this resolved finally with the town of Portland. Um. What else? I don't really have anything else, I think everything has been covered, um. That's it.
Okay, good, thank you. Uh, Dan, trustee Stewart?
Uh, just like to remind everybody that I guess it's, uh, February eighteenth, which is a Saturday, is the, uh, St. Patrick's Day. Um, kickoff dinner, I believe, firehouse, I'm, I'm. It's not a high percent time, I'm pretty sure of the time, but. Um, and then also myself and, uh, Preston, Pat, and I met with, uh, Buchanan Company, and we appreciate the time that, um, the board trustees, um. Stayed with us. Um, it was, you know, productive and. We appreciate that, so better understanding of how they operate and how they budget. So look forward to welcoming you guys in the upcoming year, and congratulations to all the officers that were recently elected, we appreciate your service. That's it.
Thank you. Trustee, Laker?
Yes, uh, I've heard from a couple residents regarding the entrance to DB school, and I spoke with Marcus and, uh, lease chief. And I'd like to pursue, um, I know there was an issue where that light was taken down during a storm many years ago.
It was an accident.
An accident.
No accident or storm, what happened?
The, the tree took it down.
Tree took it down.
So I would just like to, um, you know, look into replacing. So I would just like to, you know, look into replacing that light, or see who's, you know, responsible for it, and what actions would be needed for that. I also, you know, continue to hear from a few of the residents regarding the water rate increase, and Marcus and I have spoken. And he's agreed, you know, that I can sit down with them and make sure that, you know, we look at the rate going forward, and so, you know, if you just make sure to get me on your schedule, I'll be there. And then once again, if, if I can get the names for the individuals on the recreation committee, I'd like to get that, that committee going, we're losing this valuable time.
Yeah, this month, there'll be a meeting.
Okay, great. And then, lastly, I, I watched the most recent planning board meeting, and I have to say, I heard from some of the, the planning board members, and they had some concerns about, and, and kind of doubted the experience and knowledge of a few of the board members here, and they named, in particular, three members, and in particular, you know, I've had over ten years' experience in secret process and traffic studies, site plans, area bearings, and parking waivers and special permits, and, you know, I, I don't feel it necessary to go through entire resume, but I do have confidence in this board in moving the project forward, as well as in our professionals here, David and Marcus and Stefan. So, I just wanted to say that. That's all I have.
Trustee Murray, what do you have, question?
Thanks, last workshop, I asked for the ice rink intended. I didn't get that. I was wondering, you know, if, if there's not a lot of people attending the ice rink, maybe we can move some of that money over to the budgeting. Our recreation supervisor's request, they, they don't have any idea about that.
Yeah, Nancy was still gonna give me the list, though, I'll have it this week, I'll email it to everybody.
Okay. And I did notice in the newsletter, when I had a question, some information about the recycling, people put in a paper in the plastic, whether our manpower is being used as a county or except sort of things, I appreciate you putting in a newsletter. If you get any feedback from the highway superintendent, if that was actually an issue, an actual issue or perceived issue, and if there's any corrective action that was taken based on the newsletter.
He did not tell me there was any major issue, but I'll double check with him again as you run through the process.
See if we could move forward with any kind of enforcement, like you said, we don't want our highway guys or anything, those people being avenues for enforcement, maybe we could do it in a different way, if there are habitual offenders, or if it is becoming an issue with the county accepting any of our waste.
Yeah, so far, we've had no issues with the county, but I'll double check them.
Because I remember the, the county and the state did send out that notice a couple of months ago about receiving that, and that they were gonna crack down, so it's going to be important that we get out there in front of the issue before, if they make us a couple of lower than the street.
Yes.
Also, I know the order was completed, did we receive a copy of the order?
No, the order has not been completed.
Topic?
No, not been completed, I actually find, I actually got a an email today that is in review by the manager, as soon as that's done, then they'll get, they'll provide the final draft.
Okay. Also, I was a little confused last month about, did we actually pass the zoning text amendment for the AMS project?
No.
Okay, so, I know we set a limit of five acres, I was wondering if we could make that like four point four acres instead of five acres. Would anybody have an issue with making it four and a half acre? The main reason is because the project that's up the street, the people who put forth the original site plan several years ago, and put forth the draft legislation for the overlay visitor, they've been working diligently for the last three years to abide by, by putting in commercial, by abiding by the, the lock coverage, by the density of the housing, and I don't think it's fair that they're not gonna be afforded the opportunity to benefit from their efforts, just because their property is a half an acre smaller than the one that we're gonna issue a special permit to. So, I think everybody who is building in that corridor, especially since it's only a couple of hundred feet away, they should benefit from the same legislation and be treated the same way, especially if somebody was to try and follow the rule that we set forth years ago.
I didn't, I didn't think there was an issue with them, because I thought they
No, it is not an issue, well, their criteria, they have to abide by the criteria that was in place before the special legislation. If you remember, when this legislation was put together, they had wanted a higher density as of right, and through a year of negotiations back and forth between the planning board, the zoning board, the public hearing, we came to the conclusion that it would be less density than what they had originally entailed. Now, I haven't spoken to the developer, I don't even know if they would want it. I think we should, they should be afforded the same opportunity that somebody else is, especially since they went through this for years, lobbying for, consulting with different board members, elected officials, everybody, and I just think they're they're not being treated the same, you know, they're being treated the same as per the law, because of the, the way the legislation was written. But I think they should be afforded the same opportunity as a larger developer would be. Now, if the rest of the board don't, don't wanna go down to four and a half acres or four, four point four acres, I think it's, could almost be considered the minimus, the, the amount of percentage, you know. So I would just like you guys to think about it before the public hearing comes up, we do have the draft legislation, we have the public hearing, and make that change at that time, correct, before we approve it. If we wouldn't have to amend the draft legislation right now, we could do it during a public hearing phase, correct?
Yeah, I mean, I can send you guys what we have, just to give everybody a refresher on what that might look like, sorry, is that not working? You know, in the next couple of weeks, but.
I know we swallowed down the road in the planning phase, I know that it's sent to the county, and for some reason, we received a letter that wasn't addressed to us, I wasn't what the purpose of that was. But the letter from Mr. Smith to the planning board, we got CC'd on it the other day, and it wasn't addressed to us. It was addressed to the planning board, not the village board, it was to keep the village board informed of what's going on with the planning process, that's all.
Oh, who sent it? I was wondering if I sent it.
The thing is, our code doesn't really allow us to lobby the other appointed board.
Oh, no, he doesn't give you information.
So that you understand where that is with the tightening of this process, that's all.
More of an FYI.
Right, that's it.
Yeah, but I mean, if you don't want to be informed, then you don't have
I like to be informed, but thank you. I like to be
That information could be used.
Apparently. First, and it has been used apparently in the past, I'm not saying it will, but it's used to influence other board members to, anyway. I won't believe it, I just don't think it was proper, I'm sorry. So, what did the rest of the board members think, it should go down to four and a half or four point four, or you wanna preserve that decision for public hearing, or?
I like to reserve this decision, and I'd like to have a discussion with our chairman and also the planner.
Okay.
And we can discuss it at the workshop further.
I agree. All right, and as you know, we did receive the appraisal of the, the properties. And I think that the best course of action would be to recommend to the planning board to do a lot line adjustment, and make that one lot. Instead of trying to sell it as two lots, make it as one lot, and we get the maximum value of, I think it was a hundred ninety thousand. And it would make it a lot easier to have this one lot. I don't, I know that applicants in the public would generally come to the planning board and request annexation of land or lot line adjustments with adjacent property owners. I don't know how the village would do it, because we're the ones that own the property, do we just write a letter to the planning board and ask for a lot line adjustment to make one property, or I don't even know if they're conforming lots, you know, we can get rid of it all at once.
So, my question to that is, I, my understanding was, if, if a piece, two pieces adjacent properties were in the same name, didn't they automatically?
No, if it's a pre-existing, the non-conforming lot, if two non-conforming lots come under the ownership of one person, that lot automatically becomes one, but I believe those are conforming lots. So they don't meet that same criteria, if my interpretation of the law is correct.
Look, we can double check, I, I think one, I think one is performing, the other, the smaller one might, I mean, might be non-conforming, but let me, just look into it, and then, and
Because the appraisal does listen as separate?
Yes.
The appraisal will listen for different values?
Correct.
So, it would be easier if they would listen on the property map and on the tax map as one lot with one value.
Yep, I agree.
And there was something that I, I did find interesting, well, it is a pretty big appraisal, it's over forty pages. But on page thirty-seven, it has the highest and best, highest and best use of vacant land. It says, therefore, based on the primary uses in the area, it is our opinion that the highest and best use of the subject site as vacant would be for its development with a mixed-use building with some type of commercial use on the first floor and apartments above, which would adhere to maximize the zoning regulations, and this is in the C two zone, so it would I, I know there, there's been some debate whether the best value is residential, but the acquirer said that mixed use would be best rate, or master plan says it would be, mixed use would be best rate, best usable land, and I just don't, never thought that all residential would be bad. I just, I didn't know. Also, a friend of mine and an employee, a guy I worked with wrote a, a book about Indian Point. It's titled Indian Point, New York Power Plant, he gave a copy to the village, it has a lot of pictures in there about what the site used to look like, what it's gonna look like, he gave, like I said, he gave a copy to the village. I gave it to Marcus, I don't know if it's in the historical room, or however you wanna do it, but anybody who wanted to see him or talk to him about it, he's going to be at the Montrose Free Library on March twenty-fifth at three PM, or if you just wanted to buy a book, it's on Amazon. So, or you can just come down to Village Hall and look at it, but it has a lot of good information, it's mostly a picture book, it's not a lot of reading. So a lot of people just like big pictures, so that's the way it's written. And there again, I wanted to thank all the firemen and the chiefs, and congratulate them on this year. I know that it's, the manpower's really low, and it takes a lot of effort, sorry, I haven't been around much, but good luck to everybody, I appreciate you guys' effort, that's all I have.
You know, with the book, Sean, I was torn, because I, I, because it, it's about the village, it's about Indian Point. I really did wanna bring him in, maybe at the April meeting, not to promote his book, but to discuss some of the things that you know, are in the book, and I, I thought it was pretty interesting, I had gotten a copy too.
I'm sure Brian would be more happy to come by, he's going to all different libraries, you know, he had asked me also about setting up the table downstairs, and I said, I don't know if we could use public places for the benefit that way, but I'm sure if you wouldn't mind coming in and talking, or even just stopping during lunchtime and seeing it or something, but
Oh, yeah.
It is a pretty interesting book, it's a lot of good history.
Yeah, and maybe Buchanan Day or something, if you have a table, you know, something, that would be great. That may be, okay, with the audit, I know my direction, because we weren't getting the audit until pretty late in the audit process. And I know it takes time to do this, and I know Cindy was heavily involved, and it's a lot of work. But, you know, my, my direction before was to try to have it
They're doing the best they can to get it done, yes.
All right. The ice rink, as I stated from the beginning, we had gotten the money for the ice rink as a branch, so we got that entered through. And I could state from the beginning that it wasn't going to be used properly, that the village perhaps could sell it and then reinvest in some other type of recreation for the village, and I understand pickleball is quite popular now.
Yes, it is.
So we will, you know, the board will look at that and make a decision. Also, with the traffic lights, that has been an ongoing issue. I think to replace it, and there was no insurance money, if I, if I remember, I don't know if you remember, Sean, it was over two hundred thousand dollars.
Well, I could say, well, it was around a hundred and thirty or forty thousand dollars. It came down on a tree, a tree took it out. We were trying to get insurance money, but there was an issue with that. We wanted the school district to pay for it, but the school district wouldn't pay for it, because we had told them to put it on there as part of building BB school, and I don't even think it's on their property. So, this went on for over a year, we had a public hearing on it, we surveyed the bus drivers, and we talked to the police and the residents, they didn't want the light. They said the, the bus drivers at the time, maybe things have changed, that it wasn't an issue. Actually, the people who lived in that area were glad that the light wasn't there, because in all hours of the morning and night, trucks would have to stop, and then they would floor it to get through the light, so that's why it kinda went to the light side, and this was in two thousand and ten, I believe, or two thousand and twelve, around that time. So, we had wanted to take that pole down, and to take it down, they wanted like thirty-five thousand dollars or forty thousand dollars, so we said, we'll just leave it there. The pole was actually broken up at the top, because the mounting's were ripped out. So, there was quite the issue with the insurance, and there was, it got a little volatile because of some paperwork issues, so it was decided to abandon it based on the input from the public and the school district.
Yeah, I didn't remember the timeframe, but I remember that bus drivers that were spoken to said
They didn't care.
They were fine.
We, we actually had a police officer directing traffic there for about a year, until we made the decision whether to proceed or not. And it didn't really work out. So, we could always look at it again, but it was a, an astronomical amount of money at the time. I don't remember, it was a quarter billion dollars, I seem to remember the mid-one hundred, but that still was a lot of money.
Yeah.
And that was over ten years ago, too.
Yeah, I knew you would remember.
Well, we got yelled at a lot.
Yes.
If you remember, the PTA came here one time.
Oh, yeah.
Had a discussion with them.
Yes, yes, if you remember that now. Okay, so, first of all, if you're done, Sean.
I thought, I thought it's
Okay, just adding on.
Yeah, all right.
I'd like to congratulate our village administrator, Marcus Sorano, he was appointed to NICOM's Policy Committee of Finance. And NICOM is the New York Conference of Mayors. As a member of the finance committee, from the news release, Mr. Sorano will be directly involved in providing policy recommendations for NICOM Executive Committee, developing positions on various pieces of legislation, and considering new legislation proposals that will benefit cities and villages. The committee will address a wide range of issues, including municipal budgets, taxation, revenue options, state aid, home rule, and infrastructure funding, so congratulations. Put Buchanan on the map there, Marcus. I think we're already there, because
Yes, you were.
Our sewer treatment plant, or, or not our sewer treatment plant, but our Indian Point. Yesterday, I went to Albany to the New York Legislative Program. So like I said, the governor came out with her budget on February first, and there were some very interesting meetings, NICOM has come out with a summary, and also their thoughts on the proposals, and of course, the hot topic is, is the ADU. There's gonna be some more money for water and sewer infrastructure funding, AIM funding. It's gonna, it's gonna basically stay the same, but what I find interesting, the school got, I believe, another ten million, no, ten ten million dollars more in their budgets. But, you know, for the municipalities, we we don't give anything. Let's see, so there's, you know, there were some interesting meetings, I, I went to several of them, and but really, the highlight of the day, we were invited to the governor's mansion in the evening, and she gave her tape on the ADU legislation, and you know, there probably is more housing that's needed, but I, I think working cooperatively with the local communities and doing the carrot approach instead of the stick approach would probably go over better, and not trying to eliminate home rule. But of course, you know, I took advantage of the situation, I was standing up front, and I, I got to speak to the governor. And I, you know, I said, hello, governor, I think you remember me from, we were at the VA, I met you there. Oh, yeah, 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 I do remember you, so you always go, you wonder, yeah, okay. But I, I gave my twenty-second, my twenty-second commercial to her. So I said, well, you know, you know I'm the mayor in the village of Buchanan with the, with the Indian Point closure, we are struggling, and I really appreciate if you could give us some support, and you know, I'd look for an opportunity to speak to you about that, so I just wanted to open the door, plan the scene. So, one of the people standing next to me said, my God, you're relentless, so you have to be with these people, if you want money, you better put your hand out there. Last month, I was sworn in as the WMA, Westchester Municipal Official, Officials President. And what that is, it's a, a group, there's forty-five cities, villages, and towns within Westchester, and it's more of an apathy, bad, keep, apathy. Can I say the word? It's a group of people that work through issues and discuss different things, and we, we support one another, so one of the big things, of course, now is the Discuss different things and uh we we support one another. So one of the big things, of course, now is the A D U uh legislation points again. And once a month, we have dinner meetings, and this uh Thursday is a dinner meeting in Tarrytown. So each municipality gets to sponsor a meeting. This week, it's going to be on the E M S. And um. Basically, we're going to be talking about issues uh surrounding E M S and supplying the service, and this is a statewide issue. It was one of the. Uh conversations we had up at N I COM yesterday. So and as we were told by Eric, our um. Portland ambulance that they have everything covered now, but um. Who knows? Uh that's an important service that's supplied to our community because when we call nine one one, you want somebody to be there. Um. One of the big things. I'm on the decommission oversight board and I I really. I was really frustrated, aggravated, disgusted last week. Um. This oversight board has suddenly become very. Pro anti-nuclear, or they seem to be just taking the meeting over. So you've seen in the paper where um the water from the spent fuel pool that's has. Radiation, I'll just keep it simple, radiation in it. And it gets discharged into the river. So it's be been discharged in the river for sixty two years. The water is treated. It's true, I believe it's treated twice, and then it's discharged into the river for since nineteen sixty two when the plant opened. So now this group, uh the same group that has closed Indian Point, working with Governor Cuomo. Has decided once again that the village, they have the best best thought of what to do this for this. And how the village of Buchanan should do this. I I I'm done. I'm just telling you right now, I'm done with the nonsense. The discussion was there's four ways to get rid of this water. One. Into the river after it's treated. Number two, the water goes, um they actually ship it, and this has been done. It goes to Idaho. And they they put it into the ground out there. And I said, wow, that's not an option because we wouldn't want someone to do that to us. The um. The but the option that really irked me, it really uh this, we gotta fight this. This this cannot happen. So in their great, in their great uh experience and education in nuclear. And I'm being sarcastic. Um, they have decided what would be appropriate. Is that the water, instead of being put into the Hudson River. They would be putting these extremely large water containers. These huge containers and and somebody asked, well, how many? Well, depends what size they are or how many is going to be on the property. So in the water would be stored there until there was a better system to uh get rid of the water. Well, that's not gonna happen, folks. Um, the gentleman that was there, who was an expert, said, well, okay, first of all, these things break. So that's a no-go. Second of all, there's venting on the top. So what happens is the tritium comes out from the venting and comes on the ground. So I think we have a fight on our hands and uh, you know, I'm always looking for a good fight. But you know, I need the support. I need the support from the village, the local residents. Um because think about that. We want to reuse that property eventually. I don't know when that will be, twelve, fifteen years, I don't know. But if those containers break. It's going to spread out all over the property. Most likely, it'll go into the Hudson River. And then we have more contamination of the property. So it's still gonna go into the Hudson River, guys. And what amazes me the most with them is that uh the reason why they want to close the plant down was. The gas pipelines, they constantly, this is the same beating of the drum every meeting. They want uh they want the plant shut down because it was so unsafe. If the gas gas lines exploded, then, oh my god, there would be catastrophe. Well, they were found. There was a study from F I M Z. Um, so they're not saying that the gas lines are dangerous. So but if we have these containers there. And the gas line explodes. Then what, guys? Then they break. Then they go all over. They go into the Hudson River. That was one, one of the things. Oh, let's not forget. Let's not forget that we have the Ramapo wall there. Oh, did you forget? So that's okay to have these thing, these big containers. What if there's an earthquake? What happens to those containers? Then we've always talked about, they've always talked about um. The um terrorists. Well, what if terrorists shoot shoot them or or do something to them? You know, their argument is ridiculous. We do not want those there. And then the biggest one that cracks me up is uh Richard Webster. He has asked Coltech and they have agreed. To camouflage on the spent fuel paths. Why? Because you can see it from the river when you're going up the river. You can see the spent fuel paths. Okay, so are we gonna camouflage all these things too to make you happy? So this is just the ridiculousness that goes on at this decommission oversight board that I just. Just went over the edge on that one. That's that's unacceptable. And I said, as mayor of the village, you can be host community. That's not happening. You're gonna have to figure out something else. So I just want to update you on that because. Sometimes these meetings are a little little extreme, and some of the ideas that come out are a little ridiculous. So. Um, so next. Sorry, I'm venting. Could you notice I'm venting? Um, comments from the floor? Does anyone have comments from the floor?
What's that meeting was four hours long?
Yes, it was.
It was a long, arduous.
It was difficult, wasn't it?
Yes, it was. Um I entangled three necklaces in practice at that four hours.
Well, you did something constructive.
I did.
Yes.
Um but I I do agree with you that um they were just squabbling. Um, no different than when they were up in Albany trying to, you know, close the plant down. So, you know, whatever we can do to reset, just put the word out there. Uh, also, Dan. I I did the email with Joe Hockrider and um one of the last emails that he sent, you know. Had to do with an app, iGun. Uh that is being put on students' um phones. And what it does is mimics a true gun film. So um I would like the village to put. Joe Hockrider's email so that they can sign up for this. If you have to go to the high school, uh when you go to the high school. Um website to do that. But if we could do that for the parents. Just so that they get an idea of what's going on in the school, good and bad. Or, you know, that can be a little bit, you know, alarming. Or can be joyous, you know, going to the plays, going to, you know, different things. There's a stand presentation that. I think is open to the public. Uh in March. So I mean, there's really a lot of good stuff on there. But there's also things that, you know, if there's something going on, we need to know about that, too. That's the the negative. So that's it.
Yeah. While you're here, uh didn't we we just talk about this at a meeting when the incident took place over homecoming weekend at the school? And it was concerned by the residents. And I thought we were supposed to have had a link. To.
We do.
So, okay, so just to confirm, there is a, there is a link.
I don't go on the website.
It's on our website. So, yes, alright, it's on our website.
Did you put something in the newsletter just in case?
Sure.
I know.
Not gonna pay attention to us, but that's fine.
And just to reiterate, so always feel free to reach out to one of the board members that sits on the school board because they're more than they're more than willing to listen.
Yes.
And we have several that are.
We have a great.
Okay, they're either right on the border of of our town or or in in our town, so.
One in our.
Always use them as a resource.
Yeah, okay.
And, yeah.
But I just wanted to make sure that, you know, the residents really need to be aware of what's going on at the high school.
I believe that gun app.
She gives to the elementary and elementary school, too.
You get an email.
And it's your taxpayer money.
That's right.
You should say that. You should say that.
Yeah, Eileen, all the parents in the school district received an email on that gun app thing. We all received it. The grandparents, maybe, I don't know about. Yeah. Yeah, all the pa- I mean, we all, I I received one. I know about that same incident with the app.
Okay, any other comments from the floor? No, okay. I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel and contractual. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Alright, alright.
Thank you, everyone, for coming.